Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. I'll now convene the 6:30 evening session of City Council and ask the clerk to call the role, please.
Vice Mayor Curtis.
Present.
Councilman Hobbs.
Present.
Councilman Moffett.
Present.
Councilwoman Schmidt.
Here.
Councilwoman Snead.
Here.
Councilman Tuck. Mayor Wallace.
Here. Councilmember Tuck is absent tonight, he's on a mission for his church, and so councilor, he will not be able to attend tonight's meeting. Tonight's invocation will be given by Vice Mayor Curtis, it will be followed... Oh, we're gonna do the spotlight first? Okay. All right, now I ask to convene a spotlight on citizens and ask the clerk to read and call that role. Tonight, we are going to honor several Hampton restaurants in our Arts District. The most... I'm trying to find descriptive adjectives to think in the context of this is an asset we have in our community, and we have not done a very good job of letting the world know about it. And in spite of that, what we're going to honor and what we're going to talk about is immensely popular and a, I think I used, I'll use my favorite term, it's another jewel in Hampton's crown. So, Madam, Madam, you want to introduce that?
Well, certainly, as you mentioned, Mayor, we are growing a great food culture in Hampton. We have some establishments that have been with us for a long time, and we have some newer establishments. And when you look at the range of restaurant opportunities in our community, they're really phenomenal. I mean, oftentimes, we get asked, for instance, about can we get this national chain or that national chain? And certainly, we welcome national chains. But I also try to remind people about the unique and authentic restaurants that we have in our community that are really spectacular, and many of them are attracting people from across the water, from the south side, to come over and dine in their restaurants routinely. As I said, some are older and have been here for a long time, and others are newer. And we really just wanted to highlight the great things going on in Hampton so that our residents know about the food culture that's growing in Hampton. We're also going to recognize our QVC personalities. I bet many of our residents don't know that we have not one, but two QVC personalities in our community. And I know that they have both remarked to me and staff sometimes that they know that Hampton residents don't know that because Hampton residents will call QVC to order their product and pay the shipping to have it shipped back to Hampton. So, we certainly want to help our Hampton residents with those shipping fees by letting them know about that. We have a lot of great restaurants in our community, as the mayor said, and so tonight, we're just going to focus on those in our Arts District. And that's not to say the others in the rest of our city aren't great. But we have a half hour, and so we'll get on with talking about those great restaurants, new and old, that are going on in our community and downtown in Phoebus and Fort Monroe this evening. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our Spotlight on Citizens in the Community emcee, Brian Marchese.
Thank you, members of council, City Manager Bunting and City Attorney Valdejulie. As the City Manager said, we have a lot of amazing local restaurants here in Hampton. And locally owned establishments that offer fresh, sometimes handpicked ingredients are becoming the norm. It's not about the big chains anymore, it's about handcrafted meals. Our city boasts some many local favorites that have shown growth and gained popularity by providing signature dishes that are unique to the area. These restaurants keep the local flair alive and put a new twist on the old. It's the food that keeps locals coming and it makes the visitors want to come back to Hampton. These one-of-a-kind restaurants reflect a sense of place and offer an ambience, atmosphere, and authenticity that's uniquely Hampton. Indeed, if you do an online search for the best restaurants, you'll find that the top reviews on Yelp, TripAdvisor, Zomato are those of the local restaurant. Reviews are written from visitors from Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, Williamsburg, Richmond, all the way to California, from military members, convention visitors, tourists, and they're all being drawn to Hampton's restaurant scene. In an interview I did recently for our Choose Hampton campaign, Barking Dog and Dead Rise Partner Sean Pape so aptly stated that Hampton is the final frontier in the restaurant and entertainment scene. People are starting to look to Hampton as the next up-and-coming place for food. So, right now, I'd like to invite Leonard Sledge, our Economic Development Director, to tell you a little bit more about some of Hampton's one-of-a-kind restaurants. Leonard?
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Mayor Wallace, members of council, City Manager Bunting, City Attorney Valdejulie. It's actually a great joy that I have here tonight to be able to share this information because as it was highlighted earlier, there really is a great foodie culture here in the city of Hampton, and it grows day by day, month by month, and year by year. And while I would like to highlight every restaurant in Hampton today, we have only a limited amount of time. So, instead, we're going to focus on establishments in the downtown area and in the Phoebus area of the city where we have created the new Hampton Arts District. Some of these restaurateurs have opened second locations to take advantage of our growing foodie reputation. People throughout Hampton Roads and beyond have taken note that Hampton is a great place to enjoy great food. Whether they serve seafood and steaks or hot dogs and sandwiches, they all do it with a great degree of flair and originality. Many of these restaurants contribute to the art scene in Hampton by offering art shows, live music, and even theater productions in addition to one-of-a-kind menu selections. You may even see a contestant from American Idol from time to time. And many of these restaurants work together to create and support fun events such as the New Year's Eve Crab Pot Drop and the Rolling of the Bulls and the Freaky Con Tiki, to name a few. Got it. I'd like to call up Mr. Carlisle Bland, who's the owner of both Marker Twenty and Venture in downtown Hampton. As a side note, I had lunch at Venture today, it was a great shrimp meal. The chef and the staff there, they never disappoint. When Carlisle was featured in our Choose Hampton campaign, he said he enjoys keeping downtown a little odd. He's been behind events that live up to that criteria, such as the Rolling of the Bulls and the Slide the City event, helping to bring people a downtown, a great downtown Hampton experience. When he's not thinking up quirky events, he's serving up great food at Marker Twenty. The crab case, the crab, the crab fillet is phenomenal, by the way. Here are a few of the, here are some of the restaurants' reviews from their diners. "Love Saturday nights in the summer here, great live music outside on the deck. My favorite spot in Hampton by far, the patrons and staff make everyone feel like a local." Carlisle is also doing something different with his second restaurant, Venture Kitchen and Bar. Serving adventurous food and artisanal pizza, reviews of his restaurant have been equally good. "Venture represents everything I love about downtown, everything I hope downtown Hampton, excuse me, will become. Hope they inspire other creative foodies to open up shop in downtown. The place is hip and the chef inspired. Don't be taken back by their pizza-focused menu. They have daily specials, amazing drinks, and good, shareable appetizers. And my wife and three children," and this is me speaking personally, "they love the tots." So, Carlisle, would you please share with us a few thoughts?
Sure, members of council.
Carlisle, good evening and welcome.
Excuse me?
I said, "good evening and welcome."
Oh, oh, thank you. Thank you so much for having us here. Didn't quite know what I was going to speak about, but after having Marker Twenty for, let's see, 2016, 14 years, and now we're working on the third and a half year of Venture, we love downtown, and we love doing business in Hampton. And the one thing we want to see, me and my wife, is more restaurants, more activity, more things happening downtown in Phoebus, and my friend Sean and Gary are doing a great job with Dead Rise and Peter with Tap House and Conken Bucket, and Dana and Phil with the Grey Goose, and now the new doughnut shop. I think we're starting to build a synergy, and with the new courthouse going in place. So, I think there's a lot of opportunities for things that we can develop in the space we have to develop downtown. So, I'm always a champion for that. Plus, I'll have some more weird events for you this year. And I apologize in advance. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlisle. Another dual restaurant owner downtown is Peter Pittman, owner of Tap House and the Conken Bucket. Some would say Tap House is a bar with fabulous food, others would say a restaurant with an awesome bar. Either way, 37 rotating draft selections, fabulous food, and live music make for a great dining experience at the Tap House. As one reviewer from Alexandria, Virginia, put it, "The Tap House is one of the oldest buildings in Hampton, and the bar is loaded with so much old-world charm that it hearkens back to the days of sailors and schooners. Within moments, I could see that we were in a locals' favorite hotspot." Peter's second restaurant in downtown is the Conken Bucket, which serves dinner, sundae, brunch, and a somewhat famous shrimp and grits. Look for casual but classy dining and a cozy fire pit out back. The fire pit area is one of the best-kept secrets in the city of Hampton, it is truly amazing. Reviewers have said, "Great food and an awesome venue, don't walk out without trying the mac and cheese." The other date place on this side, our favorite, excuse me, date place on this side of the water. Wonderful food, wonderful service, definitely a HHG, Hampton Hidden Gym. Hope to return for more of the same," and that was from someone in Virginia Beach. Sean Pape, Gary McIntyre, and Joe Isles are the owners and operators of the Dead Rise and the Barking Dog Restaurant. Sean Pape calls it "the best little hot dog joint in Virginia, perhaps the only little hot dog joint featured on Distinction Magazine. Menu items go beyond hot dogs to crab cakes and fish tacos, but you can't miss those amazing dogs like the Carolina BBQ Dog, the Seattle Dog, or my absolute favorite, the Kamikaze Dog." Yes, the Kamikaze Dog. Sean and his partners have reinvigorated this Kickitane location where regulars come by car or boat for open-air waterfront dining. Here is some customer praise for the Barking Dog. "I love, love, love the Barking Dog. So good the hot dogs make you want to howl at the moon." This, no, I'm not going to howl for you. "This is a fantastic spot. I can get a hot dog top with wasabi mayo and nori. That is something worth crossing the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel for. One of the only places Hampton that I can get to via paddleboard." The Dead Rise. "When you've created a following, people will go off the beaten path for great food." Pape and McIntyre, Pape and McIntyre, and their next venture with a new partner, Joe Isles, brought Hampton seafood to one of the best views in Hampton Roads at the historic Fort Monroe. Reviewers tout, "The sunset was fantastic, service was excellent, enjoyed the waterfront scenes. There is some real talent working in the kitchen here. Get out of the traffic on the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel and, I'm sorry, got out of the traffic on the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel and stopped by here on a whim to check it out and was not disappointed. You have to try the seafood burrito from my own personal experience." Not far from the Dead Rise, we have Kat Kane.
Leonard?
Yes?
Mr. Pape is here, so you might want to...
Mr. Pape, would you like to come up and say a few words? And I have to admit, Mr. Pape and I have known each other since Little League baseball at Mallory, and so it's with great pleasure to see him doing great things here in the city of Hampton.
Sean, thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you. I just, first thing I wanted to say was, two things. Brian is really talented. I've done two videos for the city, and no matter how ridiculous I sound, when I'm sitting in the audience watching these videos that he produces, I'm like, "Did I say that?" So, he does an excellent job, and he should be commended for that. And the other thing I wanted to be clear that I stated was, the Hampton's economic development, without the money, the grants, the guidance, we wouldn't be here. So, I don't know how y'all fund that, or if, you know, my point is, keep giving them money because they're spending it wisely, and it helps people create tax revenue, jobs, and, you know, that's why I'm here, because of them. So, that's the two things I wanted to talk about. Born and raised here, lived here the majority of my life. And one thing, other thing I'll say before I go is, we had, we hired away a chef from Richmond and a chef from Virginia Beach. So, you've got people who are living these, leaving these cities that, you know, to come to Hampton. And I just think that says a lot about what's going on here in the city. And we're thrilled to be here, we're going to do more things. And, you know, I see Brandy over there with the new doughnut shop, and everyone is, it's a community. I mean, we can go to Carlisle, Brandy comes to us, if they have any questions, we all work together. And just, whatever y'all are doing as a city and an economic development, just keep doing it. We're thrilled to be here. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Not far from the Dead Rise, Kat Kane and Josh Stivers have created a Phoebus gym. The Point at Phoebus is a farm-to-table restaurant, and yes, the shrimp bangers are back. Whether it's the shrimp and grits, chicken and waffles, or sweet potato fries, The Point brings you, The Point brings you excellent and innovative coastal food. Customers have said the house blend cheese perfectly complements the Chuck and Short Rib Ground Beef Burger. The shrimp and grits is delicate where it needs to be and robust when that is right. If I lived in Phoebus or Hampton, I'd want to hang out every Friday night. What a find in Phoebus. You have to love farm-to-table places, and this is, and this one is serious. The names of the local farms they have sourced from are prominently displayed when you walk in the door. We'll be back when in the area again. Kat, would you like to come up and share a few thoughts for us?
Kat, thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you so much, sir. Josh and I are so excited to be here and to be a part. And everybody's like, "Kat, you've been here, and there was nothing when you started in Phoebus." And I said, "No, but there will be. We want to go ahead and get the level set, so when people come in, this is what it will be." And it's happening, it's so exciting, because they're like, "The competition, what about that?" I'm like, "It is not a competition." Like Scott said, the more you have, the more people come. And as we get out, people will be, "Oh, just like Ghent was." And people will come here from all, from northern Virginia, like, "Oh, you have to go down to Hampton, you have to hang out in Phoebus." It'll be a whole day, and then they'll come back. And I'm really proud to be a part of with you guys and what we're doing here, making a huge difference in this community. And thank you all for what you do and how you, how you support us. Truly, truly thankful. Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Back in downtown, Dana and Philip took over the Grey Goose, a restaurant with local roots that have kept tradition alive with their delicious ham biscuits, blue crab soup, and Brunswick stew. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the dessert case. Truly a work of art. They've also made it their own by expanding the menu, adding Philip's cupcakes and other dessert items, and offering dinner and a show featuring original musicals and cooking classes. Online mentions of the Grey Goose include, "This quaint and unique local downtown Hampton restaurant, Hampton, Virginia restaurant pleases the taste buds. Oh, and I can't forget the pie. The best cupcakes on the peninsula. I don't know what kind of icing they make, but it is perfect in every way." With the Epstein's mind coming up, just to share a few words.
We really want you to come on down. Thank you very much for being here.
Thanks for having us. Oh, well, there's that. So, that's a lovely scene from our I Love Lucy dinner-tenment. You never know what's going to happen at the Grey Goose. We are excited to be going into our 34th year downtown. Philip and I bought the restaurant eight years ago, and we look to have another 34 years, hopefully, as, as business owners. We're diversifying, doing some fun things, we do the dinner-tenment, we do a lot of catering, both on and off-site. And starting tomorrow, Friday night, I have cooking classes. My very first class is sold out, and I'm thrilled. So, just some fun, exciting, different things. We are really excited about where downtown Hampton's going, and especially our part of downtown Hampton. And the lights look great, thank you.
One of the newest additions to downtown to burst on the scene in December is Glazed Donuts owned by Brandy Fertitta and Keith Ayote. With cake and yeast donuts featuring flavors like key lime, salted, key lime, salted caramel, maple bacon, can you just smell the aroma? And rosemary lemon, not to mention coffee from local Hampton roaster Rogue Elephant. A self-proclaimed donut snob reviewer said, "I just moved back from Austin where the donuts are outlandish. Let me tell you, glaze kills it." But we can't stop there, I have to give a quick mention to these other great restaurants in the district. Brandy, that was a great dozen donuts that I picked up this morning to take into my team. You're never disappointed. And for everyone who's concerned about Krispy Kreme, they are being redeveloped into a brand-new building. But in the meantime, you can get your donut fix at Glazed in downtown.
Leonard, I have to interrupt too, and they may want to come say something as well, but you can't forget the crab donut. Because, you know, it doesn't sound like it goes together, but I'm an adventurous person, so I tried the crab donut, and it is out-of-this-world good. And so, there's all sorts of adventurous donuts, and don't be shy about trying them.
Crab town, you gotta have a crab donut.
Come on down. And while she's coming down, I'll relay the fact that this, this morning, they had put on for us and our police department, Coffee with a Cup. And I only had three donuts. I hope my wife's not watching. And they were absolutely fantastic. Brandy?
I just wanted to thank everyone for their welcoming support and other local restaurant owners helping out, like especially Sean and Carlisle. Without their support and guidance, I wouldn't have made it. And to the great staff that I have, and I couldn't have done it without them, especially Alan, the head donut maker, wouldn't have those great donuts without him. And to all the people that I recognize that have been there and regularly. And, it's really about it, I appreciate it, thank you.
Glazed Donuts neighbor Luis Ortega, owner of La Bodega on Wine Street, offers delicious sandwiches, wines, and cheeses. La Bodega hosts benefits to support local nonprofits. If you catch him on the right day, you might even find Luis, an accomplished pianist, sitting down tickling the ivories. One of La Bodega's reviews, "Never to be disappointed at La Bodega." And I don't believe Luis is here this evening, but we are so thankful again for what he's doing. Randy Holtman of the Old Town Tavern in Phoebus serves seafood favorites, burgers, soups, and salads, and their live music keeps customers coming back. Some of the Old Town reviews say, "What a great time at the Old Town Tavern on Mellon Street." And I don't believe Randy is here this either eve, either. Thank you. Davis Leonardo, owner of Papa Chichio's, has begun a new venture for the Leonardo family, who also owns Mama Rosa's. Both restaurants feature traditional Italian family recipes. We have Teresa Sears, who has, Teresa Sears has created Stillwater Tavern, a mellow sports bar and grill with seafood burgers and other eats, plus poker pool, karaoke, trivia, and painting classes. Karen Benson and Chris Jacobson, owner of, owners of the Victorian Station, and Eva Francis of the Black Dog at Victorian Station in Phoebus have been named by Veer Magazine as the best open-mic night in Hampton Roads for two years running. The Black Dog at Victorian Station is a live music hotspot and a place for great coffee, breakfast, and lunch. Goody Goodman, owner of Goody's in downtown, Goody's is a local favorite for classic deli sandwich. Lot of meat in between those two pieces of bread. Live music in a football game. Chong Kim of Musasi, Japanese restaurant. Musasi is a quaint Japanese, Korean, and sushi restaurant downtown that has a reputation for reminding our, for reminding our military community of their time abroad. Chris Glover, owner of Six Little Bar Bistro. Six is a unique tapas restaurant that adds to the charm of Phoebus. Its ambiance and seasonally-changing menu are not to be missed after a show at the American Theater. And two of our restaurateurs are actually now national television food stars, having garnered attention for their success. The Mango Mango Ladies, Lakeisha Brown Renfro, Tanisia Willis, and Nzingo Tuele Hakima are an inspiration to many with their party-in-a-jar mango preserves. When they appear on national TV, whether Shark Tank rerun or QVC, they quickly sell out of their mango-licious preserves. Continuing to gain exposure for themselves in Hampton, they will be featured on a spin-off, Beyond the Tank, on ABC. In addition to mango preserves, they've recently opened the Simply Panache Nail Bar and Petticure Spa, and just this month, on New Year's Day, opened a restaurant. And here's a quick sample of reviews from Mango Mango Cafe, which is a French Creole neo-soul cuisine bistro. "It's a foodie's heaven. The fried green tomatoes were the best I have had in Hampton Roads, second only to the very, very pricey, to a very, very pricey restaurant in Richmond. Great food, fresh, great service, great decor. Obviously, an all-around great dining experience. 100% recommended." And that was from a diner from Norfolk. And I have to say also, the carrot cake is absolutely tremendous, along with the salmon. Our other national...
Leonard?
Yes?
Before you move on, that crab cake sandwich, they actually have on their menu called the Choose Hampton Sandwich.
Yes.
So, they've adopted our development theme, so want to give a big shout-out to that.
That is, that is absolutely correct, and thank you for reminding us of that. And speaking of crabs, our other national TV star is Mr. Johnny Graham. The same family has owned Graham &amp; Rollins for four generations since 1942. One of the largest crab processors on the east coast, its Old Point Comfort Crab Meat is a hallmark of quality. As a matter of fact, this summer, while traveling with my family to Atlanta, Georgia, we were in the DeKalb Farmer's Market, and I was pleased to see Graham &amp; Rollins Crab Meat. Wonderful. Winners of QVC's Best Seafood Award and Coastal Virginia's, Coastal Virginia Magazine's Best of the 757 Seafood Market Award for the past two years, their television appearances have provided a new outlet and spiked sales for the company. Here is what people are saying. "My husband and I thought the Graham &amp; Rollins lobster and crab cakes were better than any we have had at high-end restaurants. My husband told me to get it on auto-delivery, which he has never asked me to do, so you know they are good." Another reviewer said, "Used to sell crabs, blue crabs for a living. These cakes are the freshest I've tasted since. Not much filler, sweet lumps of crab, and to us, perfectly seasoned. Johnny embodies Hampton's heritage, and his personality sells the crab cakes and the lobster crab cakes. The fresh quality is seen in the QVC videos of crabs being brought in from boats and steamed. The Popular Crustacean Sensation sells out quickly when featured. Locals need not to order online, but rather head to the Hampton Seafood Market and Restaurant at Armstead and Bassett Street to get a very, very good, delicious crab meat." Johnny, would you mind coming up and sharing a few words for us?
Good evening, Johnny, and welcome.
Thank you, glad to be here. Thanks for the opportunity to come in here and speak tonight. Totally not planned, but I know I'll be brief. There's two things that are factual. One, I like to eat, a lot. And two, I'm not a chef. And I've had an opportunity to go on QVC now for six years and promote our brand and our products and so forth. And the QVC buyers are, I've got their attention now. They're interested in growing Graham &amp; Rollins' brand and continuing that success story, and they're always looking for new products and new ideas. And I offer this because of the people that are in the audience here tonight. Again, I'm not a chef, and I'm always looking and willing to engage with whomever, with new prospects, new ideas, new opportunities, because the sky really is the limit with this company. Not my company, but with QVC and their outlet that they have to offer. It's been a blessing to be able to go on TV and sell product and, and recognize Hampton and actually do video with Hampton on national TV. And we had a great time this summer doing a, we had a drone out on the Chesapeake Bay taking video footage of a boat pulling traps and, overreaching downtown Hampton and our plant and so forth. So, you know, I'm blessed and I'm happy to engage with whoever or whatever ideas anybody may have. I'm actually working on the Crustacean Sensation Part Two now, putting crab and shrimp together. So, we'll see how it goes. But thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
And Johnny, maybe we can have that conversation about a seafood festival in downtown Hampton as well. As Brian said earlier, these are some of the restaurants that reflect the sense and place and authenticity which Hampton has to offer. The reviews speak to this new frontier in Hampton. Like this one in Yelp, which says, "I'm starting to venture more and more out into the peninsula, so I decided to try this spot out with a friend. I must say that this is a very great find in the Phoebus area. Wow, what a great decision. And I went here with a friend after finally getting on Yelp. Wow, what a great decision." We thank these restaurateurs for their decision. We thank these restaurateurs for their decision to choose Hampton. And if I did not have the opportunity to call on you to come up and say a few words, and you are among the restaurants that we've, that we've mentioned this evening, if you would just please stand at this time so that you can be recognized, just wanted to make sure that we did not miss anyone. All right? That's it. Thank you all very much, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you also, again, restaurants for choosing Hampton.
I think this ends this particular phase of our afternoon agenda and meeting, so we'll suspend our meeting for five minutes, and we'll adjourn. I'll now convene the 6:30 evening session of our council meeting, and I'll ask the clerk to call a roll, please.
Vice Mayor Curtis.
Present.
Councilman Hobbs.
Present.
Councilman Moffett.
Present.
Councilwoman Schmidt.
Here.
Councilwoman Snead.
Here.
Councilman Tuck. Mayor Wallace.
Here. Tonight's invocation will be given by Vice Mayor Curtis, and will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Lord, as we gather here this evening, we gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral, as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that's placed before us, and help us always to act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens, and to use the gifts you have given us, and to use them with wisdom. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have two items on the consent agenda, and I'll now ask the clerk to read the protocol for our consent agenda.
The consent agenda is comprised of non-controversial matters before the council, which require a vote by the council. Due to their routine nature, typically these items are adopted by one motion without separate votes. Tonight's consent agenda approves grant funding to be used for juvenile delinquency prevention and transfers a parcel of land in Old Hampton from the city to the Economic Development Authority for redevelopment in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan.
Tonight, we have two items on our consent agenda. Approval of grant funding that will be used for juvenile delinquency prevention and transfer a parcel of land in the Old Hampton section from the Economic Development Authority to the redevelopment, for redevelopment in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan. I'll now ask for a motion in respect to items one and two on the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Curtis.
Aye.
Councilman Hobbs.
Aye.
Councilman Moffett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Snead.
Aye.
Councilman Tuck. Mayor Wallace.
Aye. We have one public hearing tonight on tonight's agenda, and I'll ask the clerk to read the protocol for public hearing. And she will also read the title for item number three.
The city council takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the council conducts public hearings, and how those coming before the council should conduct themselves. Actually, Mayor Wallace, I have received the speaker sheet from downstairs, and there is no one here to speak, so I can probably dispense with the protocol. I see the city, I see the city attorney nodding, so I'll go ahead and introduce item number three. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of 123 East Pembroke Avenue, which is LRSN 2003496, to the Barrett Peak Heritage Foundation.
Well, before we take action, I didn't have discussion on this item. I'd like to recognize an individual in our audience who Mr. Moffett calls the quintessential princess in the person of, Madam. Please stand and be recognized. Now, you notice I didn't call her name, because I don't need to. Just by facial recognition, she's, she's everybody, everybody knows who she is. It's like you say, ladies and gentlemen, the President of the United States.
Mayor, members of council, it is with great pleasure that I introduce this item to you. As you all may recall, the city acquired this parcel of property at 123 East Pembroke from the Virginia State Federation of Colored Women's Clubs pursuant to the authority that was granted in the Virginia Code 15.2944, which is designed to preserve the building due to historic interest and value to the Commonwealth. Thanks to Dr. Mary T. Christian, who was the former president and director of the Virginia State Federation of Colored Women's Clubs, Inc., she has established the Barrett Peak Heritage Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to pursuing the educational objectives and social reforms that are embodied by the lives and careers of two African-American pioneers and trailblazers. Janie Porter Barrett, a social reformer and educator and founder of the Virginia State Federation of Colored Women's Clubs, and Mary S. Peak, a humanitarian educator and founder of a school for the former children of slaves under what became known as the Emancipation Oak in the great city of Hampton. The Barrett Peak Heritage Foundation now desires to house its operations at this property, the former Virginia State Headquarters for the Virginia State Federation of Colored Women's Clubs, Inc., in order to continue the goals of the former organization and the mission of these two historically prominent women. The Virginia Code authorizes the city to convey this property to a Virginia organization that is dedicated to preserving such historic places of interest. I respectfully request, after we have the public hearing, that the council will allow the transfer of the property to the Barrett Peak Heritage Foundation. Thank you, Dr. Christian, for everything that you have done to help us with this, with this endeavor.
Madam Clerk has mentioned to us that we don't have anyone signed to speak to this as a public hearing item, but just for protocol, I'll open and close public hearing at this time, and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move approval of Resolution 160034.
Second.
Vice Mayor Curtis.
Aye.
Councilman Hobbs.
Aye.
Councilman Moffett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Snead.
Aye.
Councilman Tuck. Mayor Wallace.
Aye. This concludes all of the public hearings that we had at this particular juncture, so I'll now ask the city manager to give us an introduction to the next item.
Actually, I'm going to ask Mr. Daughtry, our finance director, to come up and do a presentation on this, because this is a fairly atypical thing for us to have to do, and I wanted to make sure that the public fully understood what is being asked for the council to do this evening. As he's coming up, I'll just say, and he'll elaborate, that the Risk Management Fund was established separate from our city's general fund to manage and account for various insured and uninsured risks of loss to city departments and the Hampton City Schools. So it is a fund that covers not only the city, but the schools' insurance needs. And as I mentioned, Mr. Daughtry will elaborate a little bit on the fund, how it works, and the request tonight for an appropriation to cover claims that we had unexpectedly in 2015, but also how the reserve policy works for existing claims that span more than one fiscal year, and why those need to be reserved.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bunton. Good afternoon to the mayor, vice mayor, city council members, city attorney, city manager, and city clerk. Tonight, I'll give you a brief presentation on the Risk Management Fund appropriation to cover claims in fiscal year 2015, as well as additional reserves for existing claims to be paid in future fiscal years. First, I wanted to give you a brief background information on the Risk Management Fund. As Ms. Bunton indicated, the Risk Management Fund was established to manage and account for both various insured and self-insured risks, like workers' compensation, auto property, and general liability for both the city and schools. And the accounting standards require that you record a claim when you have two factors. And when I think about a claim, I think about someone that has submitted a request for us to pay them for a loss that they have suffered. So when I talk about a claim, that's what I refer to. The accounting standard says that two things must occur before you record that claim on your books. First, it has to be considered probable that a loss has occurred. So it's likely that a loss has occurred. And the second component is, you have to be able to determine the amount of the loss, you know, whether it's reasonably estimated. So, for instance, you may have a claim that you know a range of the costs, and the minimum of that range will be more reflective of the actual cost. But if you have no idea on the range of costs, you do not record that claim on your books. So that's the accounting standard basis for recording a claim on the books. In addition, when we record that claim, we record all direct expenses related to the claim. We will record, for workers' compensation, we record medical costs. For normal general liability cases, we record legal costs. So the whole idea is that you're recording both the claim, as well as any direct related costs to that claim. And although we record the liability on the books at the end of the fiscal year, the actual payment of the liability can actually occur over several fiscal years. Take, for instance, workers' compensation. When an employee is entitled to workers' compensation, especially for total disability, his worker cost of claim can be paid up to 500 weeks, approximately 10 years. So as you can see, that claim will be paid over 10 years. So it doesn't always incur in the next fiscal year, it can occur over a period of time. The other thing about claims, the frequency of the amounts of the claims can vary significantly from one fiscal year to the next. It's really a function of the claims experienced for that fiscal year. So one year, you could have normal claims, the next year, you could have an abnormal amount, or a normal variety of claims. And lastly, in dealing with the Risk Management Fund, accounting standards require us to look at something we call claims incurred but not reported. And how you need to think about this is that claims are often filed in some later period, and you don't necessarily know about those claims until they're filed. Well, accounting standard says that you have to consider those claims that could have incurred but was not filed, and we do that by looking at historical trends if we've had some in the past. Any questions before I move on?
Ms. Schmidt.
Now, how can you do that if you said you just have to be very specific in terms of how much the cost was? How can you, how can you estimate?
Well, you look, and when it comes to claims incurred but not reported, you look at historical trends of claims, and you can see how many that didn't get reported to you that actually turned out to be an actual valid claim. And based on the historical trends, you can come up with, for the city of Hampton, we don't have any claims incurred but not reported. We look at everything, I mean, because the trends are hard to predict. All of our claims are claim-specific on a case-by-case basis. But we do consider that in the broad picture, you know, if there was any materiality issues from the past. For instance, if we knew in the past that we've had claims that we had to report that we didn't consider, we have to consider that as a part of the accounting process. So tonight, we're asking city council to appropriate funds from the Risk Management Fund on restricted net position to cover the unanticipated claims in fiscal year 2005, as well as additional reserves for additional claims to be paid in future fiscal years. These claims for fiscal year 2015 are primarily for the Police for Fair Labor Standards Act settlement adjustments to existing workers' compensation claims and general liability issues, as well as the line of duty. The Police for Fair Labor Standards Act settlement, I think council is very familiar with that. We have reserved at the end of fiscal year 15, $3.8 million in reserve for that settlement. Workers' compensation, just to give you a little facts on the workers' compensation, you can see that we, 1.4 million and 2.3 million related to the schools for an overall total of $3.7 million. For fiscal year 2015, we had seven new claims for the city, we had two new claims for the schools, and then we had 11 old claims for workers' compensation for the schools. And those old claims, in most cases, when you're approved for workers' compensation, you're covered for life, for medical. And we had some old claims that came about and that were reopened, and they had an impact on the worker compensation claims for 2015. The Line of Duty Act, I want to kind of refresh you about that. Line of Duty Act requires state and local governments to provide death benefits and continued health, dental, and vision insurance to eligible hazardous duty employees and volunteers, law enforcement and firefighters, and their dependents if they are killed or disabled in the line of duty. In 2013, the state says that we, we became responsible for all line of duty costs. They were previously paying line of duty for both city and the state, but in 2013, we became liable and responsible for line of duty costs.
Let me interrupt you.
Yeah.
For the sake of clarity for the audience here in the room, and for the citizenry that is watching this particular telecast on their home sets, I wanted to say and indicate that that is a classic example of what we localities, local government structures call unfunded mandates. There's situations that are dictated to local governments to take or pay or absorb, or however you want to couch it, and we'll saddle with that particular expense in perpetuity. So there are committees and all sorts of agents for state and local governments that are continuously trying to get the ear of legislators to not allow unfunded mandates to come and accrue to cities, because the capacity that the state has for generating revenue far exceeds the limited capacity that local governments have. So just wanted to raise this level of consciousness to a new word, unfunded mandates, which costs that cities and counties have to absorb that's mandated to us by the state.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the line of duty-
Just one second. Ms. Snead wanted to add something else.
Under the line of duty, is that actual claims or anticipated claims, or is that premium?
I was going to explain that to you.
Okay.
Okay. Since the line of duty benefit is considered an other post-employment benefit, like retired health insurance, we are required by accounting standards to record a net OPEB obligation when we don't make the full actuarial required contribution. Across the state of Virginia, everybody is paying line of duty based on cash, pay-as-you-go basis. We're not fully funding our actuarial required contributions. For the city, that would be about $971,000. And so that's why the difference between the actuarial required contribution and our actual cash funding results in this difference of $871,000. And that is typical of state and local governments. Everybody is paying on a pay-as-you-go basis because it's so expensive to fund on an actuarial basis. And the last category is just general liabilities, which- And the last category is just general liabilities, which represents both auto liabilities and general liabilities for both the city and schools. Those are just newer claims that were incurred during 2015. So you can see the breakdown for the claims was six point seven million dollars related to the city and about two point three million dollars related to the schools, which totals to the nine million ninety-nine thousand eight ninety-three. Are there any questions before I move on?
While we're in fiscal year 2016, this says 2015?
Yes.
Is there a reason why it's?
Yes, on my next slide.
Oh, sorry.
We delayed bringing this action to council for fiscal year 2015 until the Police Fair Labor Standard Act settlement was finalized, so as not to impact the negotiations. So that was the main purpose of not bringing it to you sooner. Typically, we bring it to you when we do the other fund budget adjustments, but in this case, we did not want to discuss it until those negotiations were completed.
And in that particular situation, we did not want to publicly fund that particular account to give the individuals that were suing us or the individuals that were claiming they had been unfairly compensated an indication of how much we had, so they could tie their claim to the basis that, oh, the city has X number of dollars, let's sue them for X number of dollars. So that was the reason we refrained from doing it in 2015.
Okay. And for your information, prior to fiscal year 2013, these requests were not presented to council since the budget for the Risk Management Fund was not adopted by you. We changed that practice in 2013 to create more transparency for the fund. So prior to 2013, when we had these type of situations, we did not have to bring them to council. So this creates the most transparent situation for the public as well as city council.
Carl, I just want to reiterate that there was no legal requirement to do that.
Right.
But as Carl has stated, in order to be more transparent, we're now bringing all of these things to you.
And after this appropriation, we will have seven million dollars in the restricted net position of the Risk Management Fund to cover future claims and situations. I will take any additional questions that you have.
Carl, you used the word restricted, it's unrestricted.
Right.
Net position. Vice Mayor?
Carl, the money that goes into the Risk Management Fund, that comes from premiums?
There's normally three sources of funding. The premiums paid by the city, premiums paid by the schools, and then also we get insurance recoveries when we have, we've covered risks through some insurance policies.
Okay.
So those are the normal three sources of funding for the fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, ladies and gentlemen? Does this conclude the presentation?
Yes, sir. We just thought, as I said, it's a pretty unusual thing, and we wanted to make sure we were explaining it fully to the public.
I'll now call for a motion and a vote, please.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Curtis?
Aye.
Councilman Hobbs?
Aye.
Councilman Moffett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Snead?
Aye.
Councilman Tuck? Mayor Wallace?
Aye.
Any other miscellaneous items of new business, Madam Manager?
Yes, sir. No, sir, I think we're ready for the public comment period.
Okay, well, I'll now ask the clerk to read the protocol for public comment, please.
The purpose of city council meetings is to conduct the city's business. It is not a public forum in which people can speak on any matter. However, the city council allows for public comment at the end of the regular business meeting, limited to matters on which the council has the power and authority to act. You may sign up to speak in the lobby of City Hall one half hour prior to the meeting and until 7:00 P.M. The mayor will call you to speak in the order of sign-up. Each speaker is limited to one card, and each individual will have three minutes to speak. To save time, it's requested that speakers alternate between the podium and the freestanding microphone. All comments shall be directed to the council, and speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the council with decorum on issues or topics which the city council has the power to address. Speakers should refrain, however, from personal attacks when making such comments. Speakers should also refrain from using the public comment period for making political campaign speeches. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. It is the council's practice to listen to speakers and not engage in dialogue. After all of the speakers have been heard, the city manager, city attorney, and/or members of city council may respond as appropriate. Please note that you will be directed to leave the podium for failure to comply with this protocol after a fair warning from the presiding officer. Failure to comply with such directive may result in removal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have two speakers that have signed the public comment sheet. I'll call them as they appear on the sign-up sheet. And the first person will be Ms. Regina Quinn. Good evening, ma'am.
How are you? My name is Regina Quinn. I'm a business owner in Hampton. I have been since 2009, and I'm also an animal advocate. I am a volunteer for Dogs Deserve Better, the old Michael Vick Bad News Kennels in Surrey, Virginia. And I've also been, had the opportunity to be a program director and reporter for a live TV animal welfare show that aired in forty-nine countries. So I'm here to speak for the animals of Hampton, and I have some concerns that I'd like to share with you. The animals in Hampton have, we have Virginia state laws is what the animal control follows for the animals in Hampton. And I feel that there are certain ordinances and laws that need to be updated, changed, or tweaked to better serve the animals' welfare. One of the things, sorry, can I pick this up? Is this, no, okay. Virginia state law, section five seven nine, in particular, I want to talk about adequate shelter for animals. As you know, we've had some severe weather this past few weeks. And according to Virginia state law, adequate shelter in Hampton is three sides. For an outdoor dog is three sides, a roof, and a back, and a top. So basically, it could be made out of wood, it could be made out of plastic, it could be a cardboard box. As long as it has three sides, a roof, a top, and a back, there's not enough specifics. So I'd like to see some of those specifics being added in. And I want to share with you what Baltimore, Maryland, the city of Baltimore, has added some details to their adequate shelter that have improved the lives of animals there. This is my first time, so bear with me. Okay. So, in Baltimore, a doghouse shall have a roof, enclosed sides, a doorway, a solid level floor, raised at least two inches from the ground. That's something that's not specified in Hampton law. The doghouse shall be shaded during the months when the weather is hot. The entry shall be protected by a self-closing door, an outer door, and a flexible flap made of windproof material. Beddings such as cedar shavings, straw, and other non-absorbent materials shall be provided in sufficient quantity for insulation against cold and damp. In the city of Hampton, this past week, several hundreds of dogs were outside in makeshift shelters without those provisions. And that's concerning. And I feel like if we want to show, you know, the world and that, you know, we are, Virginia is for lovers, I think we need to pay more attention to the animal welfare in our community.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Quinn.
Thank you.
Mr. Barry Butler is the subsequent speaker.
Good evening. Good evening. Barry Butler, I'm with the Peninsula Housing and Builders Association located at seven six zero McGuire Place in Newport News. Again, good evening. On behalf of the nearly two hundred businesses and organizations that the PHBA represents and our Board of Directors, we would like to thank you for your commitment and service to the city of Hampton and the people who call it home. For those that are not familiar with the Peninsula Housing and Builders Association, since nineteen fifty-six, we've acted as the voice of our members on issues that affect the housing and building industry. The PHBA works to protect economic growth and strives to keep housing affordable. Through our public and legislative efforts, we have helped to educate the public and keep building industry thriving. The PHBA supports and promotes smart growth policies. These policies address how to best plan for and manage when and where new residential and commercial development, schools, and major highways should be built, how and where to preserve meaningful open space and protect environmentally sensitive areas, and how to pay for infrastructure required to serve a growing population. The PHBA works with local elected governments to balance interests and assure the realities of the housing marketplace are part of local decision-making. The PHBA encourages decisions based on direct citizen input that best reflects the needs, desires, and priorities of our communities. Again, on behalf of our members and the Board of Directors, thank you for your service to the citizens of Hampton. We look forward to working with you in the months and years to come.
Thank you very much. That concludes the number of individuals that have signed to speak in our public comment period. Madam Mayor? Manager?
I just, since the council's asked us where we can to respond to things immediately, I just wanted to let Ms. Quinn know and introduce Steve Bond, who's sitting up in the second row. He is our Assistant City Manager, who works with our Animal Control Advisory Committee. And what we will do, if you want to share your materials, we can make a copy and share that with the Animal Control Advisory Committee and have them look at that and any other suggestions that you have. Council has that committee to advise them on changes to the ordinance. So I wanted to make the introduction to you.
But I'd like to add the caveat that any changes to the ordinance would have to be in accordance with the Virginia Code. And sometimes, some of these other jurisdictions, we're a Dillon's Rule state, which means that we can only do that which the General Assembly has authorized us to do. So we may have to, some of your suggestions are very good, and we may have to seek authorization from the General Assembly in order to accomplish some of those things. So just wanted to let you know that there's, you know, but we will, we'll be glad to take a look at all of your suggestions.
Thank you very much. Now, before we adjourn, there's an opportunity for some council members to make some comments. So I'll open the floor up for that, please. I'll start with Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that for those of you viewing, if you missed the six o'clock spotlight tonight, which wasn't all that long ago, thank goodness, but if you didn't watch that tonight, I hope you'll take the opportunity to do that. I've been in Hampton for a long time, and I have been delighted by the increasing number of good restaurants and local restaurants that we have. But to hear them all sort of listed tonight and with the wonderful mouth-watering photographs that went along with it, it just really made me, once again, proud to be from the city. This is, we have an amazing amount of wonderful places and our restaurants. And it's also really great, I thought, to hear the downtown and the Phoebus restaurateurs say how much they welcomed other restaurants. Now, in some businesses, that would be competition that might not really be welcomed, but that is not the attitude of these folks. These folks are, please come down, because the more good restaurants we have, it literally, and I hate to use the pun, but it feeds upon itself. Success feeds upon itself. So I was really kind of blown away by the presentation, not surprised, because I've eaten in just about every one of those restaurants. I haven't been to Mango Mango yet, I have to confess, but that's because since the holidays, I've been trying not to eat out as much because I overdid it. But I will get there, and I've heard wonderful things about it. But all of those other restaurants, you know, when you just put them all together in a list like that, you realize how really blessed we are. So I hope, if you didn't see it, that you'll take the time when this rolls around again on the channel to watch that part of it, because it really was cool. And Kat is still here. Thank you for staying. Kat has The Point in Phoebus, one of my all-time favorites. And so thank you so much for everything you do for everybody here.
If I might just add, those were just in two districts of our city, too. And we'll get to the other districts in our city, but time made us limit that, so more great stuff to come.
And I guess perhaps to follow up on that, I might say that maybe our Convention and Visitors Bureau can find some really great way to market all of this. Maybe we need a phone app or something for our visitors to use that would direct them to these places.
That's a great idea.
Because we really don't, we really don't want them to miss out on those opportunities.
I'll be sure to talk about it with them. Thank you for the suggestion.
Any other comments, Ms. Schmidt?
Yeah, I am proud to announce tonight that Hampton is now offering three recycling drop-off centers. It's meant for people who don't have recycling, perhaps if you live in an apartment or you live down a lane where the recycle truck cannot come down your lane. But now we're offering recycle, remote recycling centers where you can bring your recycles to this center. There are three different stages, three different centers we have. A Hundred North Park Lane, fifteen forty Briarfield Road, and nine hundred Little Back River Road. And I don't expect you to remember that, but if you go to Hampton.gov, it's going to feature that on there. I just am so proud of us for doing that, because it just not only shows we're good stewards in Hampton, but we're thinking ahead, and we're trying to extend the life of our landfill. And this is just responsible. So this is just another good thing we're doing in Hampton. And I encourage you, if you live in an apartment or you don't have the opportunity to recycle, to go to Hampton.gov and check that out.
Any other comments by anyone else? Mrs. Snead?
Well, since we're doing good comments. Madam Manager, I want to thank you and your staff for what wonderful job you did with the roads during this storm. Even though we didn't get a lot of snow, there was ice, and the pretreatment of our streets, our main streets, really helped us out a lot. And I've heard from a lot of people saying how pleased they were with how well we did maintain our streets. So if we happen to get the big one, I think we'll be okay with our crew, so.
We do have fantastic crews, and Lynn Alsbrook and Jason Mitchell, who really sort of took the leadership, but all the way down to every driver on the trucks. They work very well together as a team, and I agree, they did a fabulous job. And I will pass on, I'm sure, the whole council's appreciation for their work and the fact that you've heard from other community members. That means so much to our staff when they get that positive feedback, so thank you for sharing.
I also echo Mrs. Snead's compliments up to the Public Works crews that did the roads. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from many people in our community, from various segments of our community, sections of our community, that spoke to how well our roads were maintained and how well they were maintained in comparison to some of the other communities that they traverse to, so that's a good thing. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? All right? If not, we'll adjourn, and thank you very much.